Can you hear him?
We'll have to walk him out to us and we'll just ring from outside.
Yeah, can you hear me over here?
Can you hear the mayor? Say something again.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear.
Okay.
Who's on the other end, Tony?
Tony, yes, Tony.
Because this is an emergency meeting, so everybody knows we can do it via telephone. Okay, uh, call this meeting to order. We're gonna go through the regular meeting thing, so we'll do the pledge of allegiance like we normally do, so it's a regular meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, then we'll consider the agenda for 316 of 2020. And we, any additions, deletions, corrections, or go as presented? Basically, an agenda, it's some consent agenda items, and then we'll move right into our emergency response proclamation and declaration of emergency. Motion, um, accept the agenda as presented, or do you have any other changes you would like to see?
We're doing a roll call here.
Oh, okay, roll call. Um, Mayor Bader present. Moko.
Here.
Goko.
Here.
Kufa absent. Padilla via phone. Tony is still there?
There.
Ann Eaker.
Here.
Okay, now we'll consider the agenda for March 16, 2020.
Make a motion to approve, uh, approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Chad, seconded by Lynn to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Tony, did you present? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
I mean, aye.
Okay. Then we'll move on to comments, updates, and concerns. Nothing from citizens, council members, staff. Okay, then we'll move on to consent agenda. There again, consent agenda, any additions, deletions, corrections, or go as presented?
I'm really hard to, the mayor.
Can you put it, the phone by?
All right, just a second.
Put it by Don.
We're moving you over by me, Tony.
Perfect, thank you.
That'll be good, 'cause then I can hear you also. Again, we're on consent agenda, and additions, corrections, deletions, or go as presented?
Make a motion, go as presented, consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion made by Chad, seconded by Lynn to move forward to consent agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, that's an aye by Padilla on telephone also.
Just, just a heads up that consent agenda, I know Lori sent out a message saying it's my Dropbox, but, um, I haven't been home, and I don't have access to my laptop here to review it.
Okay, so maybe read, when we get to it.
Well, here, what I'll tell you, Tony, is what's in the consent agenda, just to make sure, you don't wanna do anything different, is that special city council meeting is January 22nd, minutes from that, and, uh, the Highway 5 corridor study minutes from March 5th, and then some accounts payables to ratify bills, uh, February 1st through February 29th, and payment accounts payable from the 29th to March 16th. They're paying all the bills up to today's date, and then there's one special event permit for the Gaylord, uh, Chamber, and that's for their, uh, Plant the Pots in Main Street Day. That's it.
Perfect.
Okay. Okay, public hearings tonight, we have non-communication requests and petitions, we have none. All the departments are done through those, unfinished business. Basically, this meeting is a proclamation and de- declaration of emergency. Now, the proclamation and dedication is in our packet, and it's up to council if you want me to read it out loud, or would you just like to read it to yourself? It's up to council how they wanna do it.
Where is it? Page 31. Oh, I don't, I haven't, I haven't, Lauren, Lori, do you have it printed out anywhere?
Chad, did you say there's 31 pages?
It's on, it's on page 31.
It's a three-page. And you probably don't have it in front of you, right, Tony?
No, I, I do, I.
I can read it if you want me to read it. And Lori, you're recording this, aren't you? So I'll read it, then it goes on recording too. We're just getting a copy for Lynn, soon she's ready, I'll start reading it, Tony.
Otherwise, is it possible that Lori could just email it to me? Is that possible?
Sure. What email you want, Tony?
Uh, just, she can just send it to the, uh, Explorer Gaylord one, I can open that up.
The city one. Joe, also, this should be printed in the paper. This should be printed in the paper also.
I haven't seen it, I guess, in its entirety, or?
I don't know, it's gone through, it's an actual proclamation, and it's set up by state statute.
So they'll post it here at the post office or at any point, they'll post their paper?
Yes. So I guess however you wanna put notice in the paper that this has happened, if they need to review it.
Yeah, that's why I'm here, I guess, to see what, what's going on.
Yes.
I'll look at it and try to highlight some things.
Okay. So did you email it?
I'll do it right now.
Tony, let me know when you got it, okay?
That's coming from Lori Dearing.
It's coming from Lori Dearing, she just sent it, so you should have it shortly.
Are you there, Tony?
Sorry, I got you guys on mute, so you don't have to listen to my radio. Yep, oh, I'll let you know as soon as I get it here.
All righty, thank you.
All right, I got it.
Okay, again, as soon as I get my eyes focused back here again. Do you want me to read it, or you just wanna review it?
Nope, I can read it.
It's up to council what they want done.
I'm, you might wanna read these, at least these last seven, maybe? 'Cause that's the actual declaration.
Okay. The proclamation basically tells you the happenings that led up to this declaration to go through reviewing, and I'll go through the steps that the actual pro- proclamation. Soon as everybody's done reviewing it in, in its entirety, then I'll read that part out loud.
Who's listed as the emergency management director yet?
Charlie.
Charlie is, and then per, I'm gonna ask one other thing, per city charter, that in a health emergency and so forth, it's listed in our charter that the mayor, per decision of council, can work with the city by emergency response and the city administrator. The only way I would help or step in on this is if it got where it hit Gaylord hard, then I'd have to step in with the emergency response team. That's what I'm asking with this also. And that's per city charter.
Have we already started some of this with the cancellations of meetings?
It went into effect, and this is going through now per coun- per council, so that I can declare an emergency now, it's what the council's gonna do for the emergency as far as going forward. It was all just suggested for Governor Walz on cancellations of anything that had to do with the public, so that was done immediately, but no actual meeting's been affected per city, and that's why the meeting's being held tonight to move forward with the decision per council. The emergency was started on Friday and put into official effect today at this council meeting, and by the vote of councils when it actually will be officially effective.
Now, this says here only for a period of three days.
Three days, I saw, I read that too.
That's three days, and then it's, it goes for, it'll, per council's decision what they wanna do, the reason this is for three days is 'cause we're gonna go and review what we want the council to do, or what our recommendations are for council that's in the packet here, and that's what the actual emergency will be, what council decides to do.
So you have to have your meeting within three days after you declare the emergency?
This is only, this actual declaration is only good for three days. So that's why we're having a meeting right away.
Then you gotta put forth then your plan of action.
I, I apologize if I'm stepping on anybody talking, 'cause I really can't hear, but, um, can't we do, um, conversations as a council by some way of dial-in, or, or, um, some sort of a meeting so that we can continue to have our council meetings, or don't we suggest that, we don't even do that anymore?
What I was gonna suggest when I get there, Tony, I'm not to that point yet, but when I get there, I got suggestions with that according to what business comes up in the city, so we, yes, we can stay for it, but I got, and when we get to what we're actually gonna do, after we get this declaration, I got ideas for that, so yes, we will discuss that. So has everybody reviewed it, so I can go through the, the actual proclamation? Okay, now therefore, Mayor Donnelly Bader of the city of Gaylord proclaims, declares, requests, and directs as follows. Number one, under the authority given by the Minnesota State Statute, Section 12.29, declares that a local emergency exists within the city of Gaylord effective March 16, 2020, with all the powers and responsibilities attending therefore as provided by Minnesota statutes, Chapter 12. Number two, directs city staff to review ordinance, regulatory requirements, operation civil, and legal proceedings, events, and resources, and determine whether the foregoing should be adjusted or suspended, and to make recommendations regarding additional emergency regulations to support the employees and residents of the city of Gaylord. Number three, directs all city departments and offices to operate and support the response to this incidence under the direction and coordination of the city administrator and the emergency management director, including implementing new employee protocols, strategies, and processes to ensure the public services are maintained. Number four, directs the city emergency manager director and other appropriate city staff to request and coordinate appropriate aid and resources from surrounding jurisdictions, Sibley County, and the state of Minnesota, and federal government as needed. Number five, declares under the Minnesota Statute, Section 13D.021, that in-person meetings of the city council, planning commission, and other advisory commissions of the city of Gaylord are not practical or pertinent due to the COVID-19 health pandemic and the peacetime emergency declared by Governor Walz. Pursuit to the Minnesota statute, Chapter 12, and hereby directs that the meetings of the city, council, planning commission, and other advisory commissions of the city of Gaylord shall be conduct- conducted by telephone or electronic means, and hereby directs the city staff to take such action as may be necessary to enable such meetings to occur via telephone or other electronic means pursuant to the Minnesota statute 13D.021 until such time as it is no longer impractical or pertinent, impertinent, for the city of Gaylord Planning Commission and other advisory commissions to resume in-person meetings. Number six, requests that the city council convene on an emergency session via telephone pursuant, Minnesota statute, Section 13D.021, at 6:00 PM on March 16, 2020, to discuss the situation, and this declaration, this emergency declaration shall continue for a period of three days from its effective date, March 16, 2020, unless further extended or with the consent of city council pursuant to Minnesota statute, Section 12.29, subsection 1. Orders that this declaration be given prompt and general publicity, and that it be filed promptly with the city clerk. That brings us to the actual, uh, motion for approval, so at this time, I'd ask any of those seven things, if there's any questions on that, and Tony, you had the question, so it kinda explains that, yes, we will be conducting city council meetings if the agenda so says that we have to get certain businesses done, we gotta pay our bills, we gotta do other things that gotta be approved by city, so we may not have them twice a month if this thing goes on, but we will have them, so our city businesses will run as normal, but they will probably be done via email or, uh, telephone connection, so we can get the voting done.
Ty and I are also looking into something like a Skype meeting or something like that to see what we can figure out, so.
So it'll probably be electronic meetings until we've get through this situation, it's probably the easiest way to explain it. Any other questions on those seven?
I know that, um, during the flood, I'm just going back to this, 'cause this is the last time I, I think that I can remember anything happening, but, uh, the council met at, at the Napa store there, and, um, they basically authorized the mayor to make all the decisions on behalf of the council. Um, I'm just curious with this number one, is that, uh, is that providing the power to the mayor to make the decision, or are we, the council still? We'll have to keep it, 'cause I don't know what that chapter says.
Basically, we're, we're putting this through, that it goes through the emergency response administrator, which is Charlie, city administrator, which is Lori, and per city charter, is if the emergency is declared, that the mayor can step in and probably will step in and be part of this also, and that's per city charter, but no, it's not. It's up to council what they wanna do, if they want the mayor to be 100% ahead of it, they can, but the other emergency respond administrator and city administrator be also involved. And I can pull out the city, I can pull out the city charter if you want me to read that to you where it states that also, Tony.
No, um, you don't have to, and, uh, I apologize, but, uh, I'm gonna have to run here in a minute, um, but, um, I think that, you know, as long as we're available, um, how we worked it out last time, it seemed like it worked out pretty slick, there wasn't a lot of problems with it, but, um, there wasn't really a lot of decisions that had to been, had to be made either. Um, I think when you start looking at personnel issues, or, um, you know, I've, I've heard a lot of different things, a lot of different cities are doing, I think that, um, that the council would wanna be involved in, in making those decisions. So, um, unfortunately, I have to apologize to the council, 'cause I have to run to, to a meeting that I'm here for, um, that I gotta get to, and so, um, I wish you guys the best, sorry.
Not a problem, Tony, I'm glad you were able to dial in and at least get through this part, so you understand what's going on.
Yeah, all right, I will, uh, be in touch and find with Lori, uh, later on tonight, find out what happened. Thank you.
You bet, see you later.
Thought you needed him for the vote. I don't have to, but we got three.
Yeah, we got three.
So in the next three days, hopefully come up with the criteria that, um, see?
No, we're gonna do it tonight.
We're gonna, that's, it's in our agenda.
That's why we're having the meeting.
Yeah, we're gonna do it now, so we can implement. So, we're back up to here, does everybody, so what we're asked here is, it's moved by what council person wants to put this in proclamation, declaration into effect?
If we need Aaron, he's available. You know, if we need a question, he said he's available until 7:00.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion, I guess, to go ahead and approve emergency proclamation, declaration of emergency. As presented.
Second.
Motion made by Chad, seconded by Jessica, to move forward with the proclamation declaration of emergency. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All same sign, motion carries. So that is in effect, and now we move down to 11B, and this is the plans and procedures for continuing city operations. And I should probably make clear with Tony's thing, what he brought up about is implementing this, and who's gonna implement it, he brought up the last time that the mayor was the go-to person with the flood, if that should be the same way. It's totally up to council, I'm not telling what to do. We went through this once before when we had the flood, and we went through it very well. The council was always informed in all, every step that went through, and if we had to have meetings, we did. And then, as he said, we had a meeting right in my Napa store one time during the day, 'cause I couldn't get out of there, so we just met at my store. So it's, but at the same time, what I explained to him, we've got an emergency person in place with Charlie, and we have a city administrator, so it's, I think we, we can work well and get through this. I just wanna get through it, that's all I want. And I'm hoping that Gaylord don't have to hit it on the front lines like some other places are, maybe we don't have to, we'll just take the precautions, and we're gonna be done, it'd be great if that's all we gotta do.
So I had staff meeting this morning with the staff, um, and we talked through issues, um, with Ty, and Karen was here, 'cause Charlie wasn't here today, so Karen talked about what they had implemented for, you know, police department, just to be cautious, you know, keeping the distance, um, ambulances got their protocol all put together through Ridgeview, um, Ty and Justin and Leighton are working through their stuff, and so I think we're all pretty in touch with everything. I know Charlie's been doing webinars with the county every day for the last four or five days, so.
The way the city charter reads, in time of public danger or emergency, this is under the mayor section, in time of public danger or emergency, he or she may, with the consent of council, take command of the police, maintain order, and enforce the law in an event of a vacancy, the officer, then that goes under that. I don't see no reason that I have to take in charge of the police, what I'm saying is that it, it's just that we work together and get through this, and that's all I'm asking for. And no financial decisions, no anything, all, the only decisions that be made per emergency would be if it's a life or death situation, which I, like, again, I said, I hope we never have to run across any of that, where it gets that bad within our city. I wanna set the precautions now, so we don't have to.
So what happens if you become ill, or Lori becomes ill, or their backup?
If I become ill and incapable to take my, then it's Chad takes over as, as council president, takes over as my spot, yes.
Or Walz, I guess, is my, yeah.
Just so we know, the protocol for that.
If we all get sick, then we're screwed.
Yeah. Then it goes, and then it also goes by a, a, appointment, let's say if Chad got sick, then the council appoints somebody to fill that spot, so then it's just appointment from that point on. Good question, have it all laid out.
So, sounds like we got the parameters.
Okay, so let's go down some of this and see what, making plans for continuing city operations.
I have a question before we move off of that.
Okay.
Um, if Charlie's out, then I'm assuming it would be Karen, so she's the most senior?
If Charlie's sick and can't do it, yes, it'd probably go down to the next.
Senior or the level?
Yeah, yeah.
So we don't have a sergeant?
Right.
So you three will work together then?
Yep, that's my suggestion, yes. Okay, any other questions before we move on? I wanna make sure everybody understands, when we leave this meeting tonight, everybody knows exactly what's happening, 'cause if anybody asks you, we all gonna have the same story leaving this, so we understand what's going on.
Yeah, and it, just, I, I think, any decision that is made, or whatever, that the council's immediately informed by, by email, I'm sure Joe would probably wanna be a part of that too, communication.
Communication to the public is good too, we have to do it. My monthly newsletter, this is my topic, I'm, what our meeting is tonight, and what we're deciding and doing some of this, I'll be putting it through on my monthly newsletter also, to try to get as much information to the public that I can.
We'll put stuff on the website and the Facebook page, and we can even run stuff on the sign at the library, the thing over there.
Okay. Now, we're just gonna go down some of these topics, and if we get down to the bottom, if anybody's got anything they thought that they should be added that we didn't touch on, feel free to bring it up, so we can make sure we get everything covered. First thing is making plans for continuing city operations. There again, Tony touched on city meetings and stuff, Lori's got some ideas. In front of you is what some other cities are doing that I got through the mayor, she got some stuff through the administrative site, this is through the Minnesota League of Cities, is where this stuff all comes out of when we talk to each other, as all the mayors in the state of Minnesota. My suggestion is following some of these, which is very, pretty much right down the line for city office, is to close the doors, continue business inside with city staff, and payments through Dropbox or email, or conduct it that way, so we can still work from inside. If anybody inside can work from at home, but we can't with our computers, the way they're set up, so that, you know, if something gets changed, that we can do that, we can remotely work if we have to, but we gotta keep city operations going, and that's one of Lori's suggestions, how to do it, is close the door, keep city staff going inside and working as normal, and pay through internet, Dropbox, or mail.
Phone.
And phone, and do credit card over the phone and so forth.
Right, I mean, obviously, we wanna post on the door, we're open, door's locked, but we're open, please call, right, I mean, that type of message. Wanna be clear to the public that, hey, we're open, but don't come in.
I would say it should be posted on the door, we should have it on Facebook, we should have it on our internet site, we should have it in the newspaper, I'll actually put it in my newsletter.
It's a, it's a big deal, you know, for, you know, for, for any of us, I mean, it's a public building, everybody's is welcome here, and to, to lock that door during business hours, that, to me, is a big deal.
Yes, yes, I agree. At the same time, I think the safety of our employees is very important, too.
Oh, I, I hear you, I mean.
This is a tough situation, so the, the, and.
Like you said, the alternative is.
All weekend, I've, but all I've been doing is research and seeing what everybody else is doing, and making sure we're not jumping the gun, I don't wanna be behind the ball either, so yes, it's, I'm taking this very seriously.
Right, I mean, alternatively, you said work from home type of deal, but the way networks are set up, and it's, a lot of us should be able to work from home, but it's not the case due to how things are set up, but.
Okay.
Um, the county did close the libraries effective?
Tomorrow, I think, no, is it Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday? Yeah, all county libraries are shut down.
Did you guys have a board meeting and decide that, or what? How did, how was that decided?
Commissioners do that, or?
No, we're contracted to the county, so technically, the county can shut them down, because they do all the administrative work with the libraries. We just pay for their services now, being that it's here in Gaylord, everything goes through the county. So actually, they're the ones that can say their name, whatever, so it's. So actually, they're the ones that can say their name, whatever, so it's... And actually, one of these other things that in here about their library is shut down, too.
Yeah, CH Library.
Yeah. So is everybody in agreeance with that, starting out with the city offices, so everybody understands with the city staff?
Are we putting an end date, like, two weeks, like with the school, and then see, reevaluate?
I would like to stay with the original date that I first put out on Friday, which is March 31st, and we'll reevaluate at that time, if we need to move forward, according to state and federal guidelines?
Yep.
Okay, so everything we're discussing will go through March 31st.
Okay.
And be reevaluated at that time. Which will be having, conducting another meeting, whether it's phone or in person at So we're clear on the city offices, I don't want to move on until we know everything when we get done.
So everybody will be here?
Mm-hmm.
The door will be shut, so you can access them through phone calls, emails?
Everything except in...
Put your bills in the Dropbox, pay online.
Everything except in person.
Okay, somebody needs a permit, they can call in, pay online, and Lori can put it in, like, a box outside, or take...
They can print them offline, all of our permits are online.
Well, if they don't have a computer?
Yeah, they can ask, I guess.
So if somebody doesn't have a computer, it'll be how you can get something to them, and how they can pay. They can pay through the Dropbox, but where will they, how will they get the form?
Well, if it's a, do they have to have it within the next two weeks?
I don't know, just trying to...
Ask it.
Yeah, just trying to work through it.
Well, can they have it in two days, it can be mailed to them.
Yeah, we can just mail it to them.
Okay.
If they can print it online.
Okay.
They should be able to get it in two days by mail, so it's...
As long as that keeps going right.
And I know, like, St. Paul, they said no issuing permits for over committee, or something over, like, fifty people, or anything like that, is that something we need to worry about?
As far as fifty people for events?
Special event.
Yeah, special event.
At this point, I'm saying all events are canceled till March 31st?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the bars are, or the bars and everything are shutting down tomorrow, like, things like the Pub Putt, those are scrapped.
All, all events till March 31st are scrapped, that's what I'm suggesting.
So we should probably post that, then?
Yep.
Okay.
If they've got a permit, prior, like the Pudd Putt?
They do.
They can postpone, and this permit can go towards their date after this clears out.
Because they weren't going to announce if they were closing or not until...
They did.
Did they do it now?
They postponed it.
Okay, because the weekend, I know it wasn't yet.
No, I'd seen it wasn't yet, but I heard today that it was.
Yeah, today it was, but even so, I mean, that still was over what the governor approved anyways.
Mm-hmm.
But they did postpone it.
So I'm suggesting everything, and as far as individual, I can see, I'm actually church president, too, of our church right now, I got a meeting tomorrow on this, part of this matter, and we're going to probably cancel all Lenten services for the rest of Lent, because of the handling of food, we usually serve lunch at our Lenten service, so that's going to probably be canceled. We've already put precautions in the church as far as collection plates, and communion, and all that, so nobody's touching anything in each other, but the fact that they're going down to ten people, I can see churches canceling too, that's too, for a period of time.
I think they'll have to.
So, that'll be discussed, but I know our Lenten services are going to probably move forward to be canceled.
But we're not canceled.
But it's not, we're not in charge of churches.
No.
But I'm just saying, events, and that's the reason why I'm saying events, churches are all on their own.
Yeah.
But anything that's mandated by the city via permit, or being within the city jurisdiction, or anything like that, are canceled till March 31st.
Okay.
Very good.
So we're all clear on how the city operations are going to go, how our meetings are going to go as council, as we, if we need to meet during this time. If something happens before March 31st that we meet, it will be by phone or internet. We will not meet in person again during these, till, and then we'll reevaluate at March 31st, probably by phone at that time, if we're going to move forward. I'd rather us not having any more in-person meetings.
Well, April 1st is our regular scheduled council meeting, so we can just keep that date.
So we'll just keep April 1st as our next meeting date to review how we move forward, and then we can do some more business that needs to be done, whether it be paying bills and stuff at that point.
So where will Ty and those guys, will they just meet in the garage, will they not meet, how's that going to work? Like, because you're up here, and you're closed in, but what, how are they going to conduct their business?
They'll call, I mean, they'll phone, or whatever.
Just asking, like, was that the plan, is that they'll meet down there, that they'll...
They each have their own place.
To go to?
Yeah, they each have their own place to go to, so...
So they'll just continue?
Doing what they're already doing.
Okay.
And Lori, you will review this with them after we get done with this meeting, so this all gets reviewed with the rest of city staff tomorrow.
Okay.
That would be good, you know, well, you guys are, that you're even separated from them, that, you know, that they don't come in, you know what I'm saying?
Well, that'd defeat the purpose, if they're going to come in and out of here, so...
Right.
They don't have any need to come in or out.
Go for one calls.
You can scan it in, email it to them.
There's going to be a lot more online stuff getting done, that's the only way to get through this. Okay, then we talked about this possible closure, eliminating access to city-owned buildings in City Hall, I think we pretty much covered how that's going to be handled. Employee working from home policy, some other cities have set up stuff, it's, I don't know how much working at home we're actually going to have, but...
I don't feel we're to that point yet, do you?
I don't think in the next two weeks that one has to be covered yet, but on a revaluation point, it may need to be.
Well, you're at least six feet apart from each other.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
You know, so you're meeting that, it's not like you're...
I'd keep that buffer, within the City Hall, I would try to keep that buffer if you can.
Yeah, we're far enough apart.
Mm-hmm.
And we've been spraying Lysol, and we got the Clorox wipes, and wiping everything, and we took away the pens and the candy dish and everything, so...
And again, some of these are the same thing, the paid time off policy, probably not going to have any of that happening within the next two weeks, or the travel restrictions and quarantine, I hope we don't have any of that in the next two weeks.
They canceled the girls' clerk conference that was supposed to be this week in St. Cloud, that was canceled, and Bob had a water conference somewhere, it was in St. Cloud, too, that's been canceled.
Yeah, I got, MinDOT canceled all certifications and trainings, basically, pretty much till further notice.
I had a couple small meetings, I had one in Mankato, just after meeting, that was canceled, so everything's been canceled.
Most everything's been canceled, so it's safe, we can say that we're, none of our city staff is going to be attending any meetings, even if they're not canceled, I think we can say that as a city.
Unfortunately, I had all my certifications done already.
Oh, darn.
And the other thing that's not on here is, when I was talking to Jenny this morning, she said that they were going to talk about making maybe payment arrangements for some of the people that are affected, like, some of the hourly people, if they're not working.
Out in the community, you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and maybe instead, I don't know, instead of doing shut offs, or something, make up some, you know, have, if they call us, we can set up...
Or hardship, probably, yes.
I think the governor said something about no shut offs, and no evictions.
Pretty much, we can't do any of that anymore.
Right now.
Through this, I think, the way I understand it.
Yeah.
But they need to set up some sort of a payment arrangement, they just can't just blow it off, you know what I mean?
Well, they'll still be responsible, but I don't think we can turn off it.
We can't turn anything off, but yes, set up payment plans. Basically, this whole thing, what we're discussing tonight, is we're getting our feet wet into this situation, to see how far it's going to go, and I can understand the containment that needs to be done, to stop the spread of it, because if we don't stop the spread of it, it's just going to get worse, and fortunately, we don't have any in Sibley County yet. Two neighboring counties, yes. Friday, the state of Minnesota had fourteen, as of this morning, there's fifteen, or fifty-four confirmed.
Did you see that map, Joe? Did you get, you get a copy of?
So, um, what's our closest county?
Greenville has some.
And Carver does.
And Carver.
Right on the other top corner.
Are we still, McLeod's still good, and...
Yep.
And then, there isn't any reported in Brown, either?
But really, the, the thing with this that gets you is that, that two week, after two weeks, I mean, you know, much, you know, if you could fast forward two weeks, the map's going to look a lot different, but that's where we are, you know, essentially, today, you just don't know it. It could be, and then, that's the...
The next meeting we have on April 1st will be a whole different type of meeting.
It's going to get worse, or it's going to get better?
Oh, it's gonna.
Did talk to Meals on Wheels Lutheran Social Services, they are still going to deliver, like, personal delivery, not have the meals?
Yeah.
Just deliver to, like, you know, put it on your doorstep, or whatever, so they're still going to do that.
Sibley's has lunch handout for student, or for children under eighteen, and they have about four pickup sites, starting tomorrow, over the lunch hour, and it'll be lunches and breakfasts, so... Everybody knows that.
Are there any other groups that we're not thinking about, like, Meals on Wheels was a good thing to think about, because there's seniors that really depend on that, so we, it's good that they're not stopping that, but...
Pastor Scott came in and talked a little bit this morning, and he was going to go around, trying to talk to people, and see if we could do something else, but he hadn't gotten back to me yet.
I can't...
That's actually my pastor, I'll be talking to him tomorrow night.
Yeah, so he said he was going to talk to some of the other churches and see...
I can't think if there's any other services that we currently have set up that we're just not thinking about, other than, like, the Meals on Wheels?
And I think we were going to put that on the website and stuff, too, saying that they were still going to be, you know, operating, and you need to call the day before if you wanted a meal, and...
They'll drop it at your door.
I think she put the, I think she put the menu on there, and the phone number on there today, so then if people, you know, if they're shut in, then at least they can call and get a meal, you know, delivered to them.
Anything that may pop up, good question about that, that could come after we're done with this meeting, I would suggest that follows the guidelines that council is setting up now, until March 31st, so we're, if we're shutting down things within the city, should follow that same guideline, if it falls underneath that.
Sure.
If it is, falls underneath, that we need to help residents, which we've talked about, that we help the residents, whether it's deferring their payments till things are back on its feet, and so forth, so that goes across the board, and basically staying in with the guidelines that council decides to do tonight, so we, because there will be some other incidents that pop up.
Can I send out an email, too? Or if you guys know of anything, let me know, any questions, you know what I mean?
But they're going down to ten?
It already did, already did.
So like, the grocery, you guys talked about the grocery store, I mean, how, I mean, that's, that's obviously the, now, you know...
Grocery stores and pharmacies and hardware stores are, they, the governor wants them to stay open, and they're needed to stay open, and please stay open, and...
It was good to see plenty of alcohol wipes, that she had, that thing was ready to go, because some places actually didn't, they didn't have the wipes there for the carts or anything, and that's not a good deal, but...
Anything that's going to do to handle the emergencies, like Jess has stated, is that the governor's asking to be, remain open. Anything else council wants to bring up at this time? So we're going to put this emergency in effect as of this meeting, it's going to be in effect.
Oh, but you, just one more, the grocery side of it, too, you haven't heard, deliveries, you know, that's the biggest thing, the trucks keep rolling, right?
Yeah, I haven't, I mean, I know, I'm sure there's a lot of rumors, but trucks are still coming, I know, a lot of, there were some things that were out at the warehouse, but I know that they're coming in this week, and we should get, like, more Lysol wipes by Thursday, and hopefully hand sanitizer, and stuff like that, we just didn't get them on Mondays, Lloyd, but we should be getting them. And we still have toilet paper.
Don't advertise that, too.
I think they should start saying, you can take some, but take one roll.
Yeah, they got to limit them.
I mean, they got to start limiting stuff, so people don't get so crazy.
Yeah, I think some places were rationing it out.
Yeah, they just need to, because...
They were getting it in, and they were going.
Yeah, people were spying it out, yeah.
And everybody understands at the bottom, says all meetings and events will be canceled until further notice, we discussed that, we're going until March 31st, be reviewed at April 1st, that'll be our regular scheduled meeting, and expect that one to probably be in online, or via phone, or whatever, we're going to end up, or Skype, or whatever, how we ever ended up.
Let us know how to, how we're going to, how that...
We will, how everybody can connect to it, we'll figure it all out.
Or each can take a corner of the intersection out there, or whatever.
Yell across.
So what I'd like to do, just so it goes on the record, because we talked about all this, implementing these plans, that are alternative by city ordinance, and stuff like that, we're doing different things a little different, I'd like to, under one motion, put this through by a vote, that everybody agrees that this is what we're doing, what we discussed tonight, exactly the way that we discussed it. The reason I'm doing that, I don't want someone to come back later, that isn't the way we did it, you know, I just, I want clarification, so everybody's on the same page, and if you're not clear with anything yet, now, please, now, let's talk it through, so everybody understands.
The only person that has children, small children, are Maida, you know, that's working, so if she would want to be off, I'm sure she doesn't have very much sick, but I think we're mandatory to give them at least the fourteen days, I think, is what came across the computer.
What I'm suggesting there is that we follow state guidelines, whatever state guidelines are, we should be following that through this emergency.
I don't know how that works, though, so that would be, you know, an interesting thing, because if you start just, like, oh, Lynn has kids, so she's going to be home...
Well, it says for childcare.
Yeah, I know, but if you say, I'm going to pay her two weeks, and, but Don doesn't have kids, so, I mean, I get, like, I would pay you, but maybe that stays on the books as you working that back off, you know what I'm saying?
That's what they're, if you don't have it, yeah.
Right.
That's what actually, I think, they're proposing, they're going to propose at Hutch tomorrow, is to have a credit of twenty or forty hours, or whatever, that you can earn it back.
Like you go in the hole?
Yes, like you go in the hole, like, I mean, we...
That's what they're going to propose.
Right, because we don't allow you to go in the hole, but, you know, if this is something that is, is going to happen, could happen at, at our workplace as well, I would think, because that's quite an impact for the employer, just to say, well, yeah, here you go, everybody, you know?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we should do that.
That you would have to, if you don't have it, that you would be working, that would be, just like you said, Chad, like a credit, and then you would end up working that back.
Right, because, I mean, the real hardship, depending upon how many weeks this stuff keeps going on, look, you look at eight weeks, and if half the workforce that have, you know, the kids, that, it's going to, it's not going to be good if they're not getting a paycheck, and, I mean...
Right.
We all got to buy milk and everything else, so...
But the daycare centers are still open, and daycares are still open.
But unless, you know, unless one of them gets sick, whether if a kid gets sick in there, and then they have to close, or if one of the caregivers are sick.
But even, but even if daycares are open, there's a lot of parents that are making the conscious decision right now, not to, you know, schools, they're making the conscious decision not to put their kids in the daycare, to limit their exposure, so, I mean, you got to respect that, too, I guess, if you can make that work, but, yeah, I don't know.
I don't think we're after doing what's called handouts, I think we're here not that, to, to take care of the inconvenience and the hardship.
Yeah.
And after we get through it, yes, some of the hardship that we took care of upfront would come back, and the backside, back to the city, that it just isn't a handout, and I think that's...
But that would just be, like, one of the things, like you said, if Maida's the only one that doesn't have, or has children, that I would foresee that maybe that could be, you know, and something that would happen, and, like, you also stated, she doesn't have much for sick time, or PTO, vacation time that she can use, then you might be in that situation sooner than later, I don't know.
Yeah, possibly.
Just so you know how you're going to handle it, if it's going to be, like, a credit, and how many hours, or what, what you want okay with that.
It said on that email that we got, I think it was yesterday, or Friday, you know, just keep track of it, you know, keep track of it, because, you know, they're, eventually, you know, we might get state money back, you know, like a FEMA, or something, so just keep track of it.
Some of them are really detailed, that the city don't have to, some of the bigger cities are way more detailed than the city of Gaylord has to be, but yes, I think we'll take a general consensus from other cities, and then work out the details like that, and And what Lori can do is work this out, what we're actually going to do, so it's in black and white. And type it up and ship it out to, to everybody in council. And all, all council has to do is send it back to, to her. Yep, yep, yep. And then we just got it recorded. And if anybody's got any questions...
You'll work with her first, for the rough draft at least. So, you two are on the same page? Just get it out to council at least, right? Okay.
And I can send it to Aaron too, to make sure.
And then run it through Aaron to make sure all the legalities are done right, yes. That way, you actually got a copy of it, so if you've got questions from somebody on the street, yep, this is what we're doing.
And that, we expect that to come out when, or?
Well, hopefully by the end of day tomorrow.
Yeah, at least tomorrow.
Okay, very good.
So, that's all we need for action and there won't be no motion. And then we'll do that, get the draft it out to council and then council by email can just return the email to Lori so we don't have no open meeting violations. So, it goes back to Lori. Any other questions? We're in an unfortunate situation. I can't stress it enough and I want everybody to be safe and that's all I want for our city. I don't think the council wants anything different. So, let's all work together and get through this rough situation. If there's nothing else, I would ask to, a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Jessica, second by Linda, adjourn all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All say and sign, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Stay safe.
Scott, you see the text back and he said he is at Camp Ripley this week doing some training, so that's why he couldn't call.
You just get him updated information along...